Call the March 7, 2019 meeting of the West County Council of Education School District Board of Education in order.
Quiet!
We welcome public participation in all our meetings. If you're here to speak with the board about an item on the agenda, please complete an orange collar request to address the board form that is on the table near the door. You'll be called to speak with that item before the board on the agenda. You can also speak to the board on any educationally relevant item that's not on the agenda during the public comment item on the agenda. Please understand that the board can't comment or respond to items that are not on the agenda, but may direct staff to add an item much in area of concern to the agenda of a future meeting. Could you please have roll call? Yes. Board Member Cuavis, Board Member Phillips, President, Board Member LaRue, Board Member Fernandez-Jalas, and Board President Tom Cass. President. And we are expecting Board Member Cuavis, but she's running behind schedule, we'll wait. Dr. Guerrero, do we have a count of speakers?
Yes, we have a total of thirteen speakers.
Okay, so thirteen speakers. So everybody will get two minutes. If we get a whole bunch more speakers down, we may end up cutting the time now a little bit, but we're normally based on the number of requests to speak we receive. This evening, we're very fortunate to be able to have this discussion on this item to the board here. This evening, we'll be using a talking piece when we speak. It's actually here from Vianza, and it's very symbolic here at Vianza because it's actually a chemistry of exploding color that was confiscated at one point. And it represents talking about our issues and having honest discussions in the spirit of it. So with that, Mr. Duffy, would you like to speak to us?
Yes. Good evening, board, and good evening, community. Thought it would be a little easier if myself and Lisa LeBlanc could do the presentation just from up here somewhere between community and board instead of kind of talking in the corner. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and part of the study session. The idea for the study session originated from our board of trustees over the last couple of months who asked to study a little more the situation around facilities, facilities challenges, charter facilities, co-locations, a little bit more deeply, and have an opportunity to learn and ask questions. I've had a chance over the past week to talk with, or two weeks, to talk a little bit more with staffs at Cressby and Penole Middle, families at Cressby, and small gathering of families at Penole Middle about the situation. So tonight, what we're going to do is just present some information, present some slides. I think what we want to do is get into as much dialogue with the board and hear and understand the public comments. So we really encourage public, if you have comments, to please make your voice heard and submit a card. It's really important to hear from as many posts as possible about this issue. I also just want to start both of the thank you to members of the community who have been kind of sitting with some discomfort over the past couple of months about what's the future of our schools, what's the future of some of our facilities, and really to offer an apology where what I think is a larger district issue about facilities challenges in our district sort of turned into a single issue around closure of a particular school. And what we'll really show tonight is what we're facing, the challenge that we're facing is we have more schools in our district, if you include the charter schools that we own facilities for, then we have physical campuses that are ready to serve them. And that's really the mismatch that we are challenged with finding a solution to. And that's what we'll talk a little bit more about tonight. So thank you again for being here. Thanks for sitting with some discomfort over the last couple of months as we work through some pretty serious challenges. So what we're up to tonight, board members, is to understand, discuss, receive feedback about the current challenge of too many schools and too few physical campuses that can serve students in a legally compliant manner. What we're going to do a little bit more specifically is try to understand our legal requirements and responsibilities to charters regarding facilities, to understand what charter schools are located within our district, including those that are being housed by the district. We're going to try to clarify the Proposition 39 facilities timeline and facilities requests for the 1920 school year. We're also going to explore and discuss issues for the district to fulfill those duties under Proposition 39. I'm going to turn over a couple of slides to our Associate Superintendent of Facilities, Lisa LeBlanc. Lisa is very much involved in both the facilities and also the negotiations with charters about space across the district. So, Lisa LeBlanc?
Yeah, thank you. We're going to take just a second to change out the projector a little bit, get it a little bit brighter for you. But thank you all for being here this evening because, as Mr. Duffy says, it is a really challenging situation and the district is faced with two house charters. And so we really wanted to take an opportunity to provide you with some information just so you are educated and can understand, and also provide us feedback. So we'll just take one quick second here. And yes, we have translation over here if anyone needs translation, so that is available. So this is a slide that has the legal requirements on it. So we have ECO requirements, we have case law, and basically, you know, public school facilities are supposed to be shared equally among all students, all public school students, including those in charter schools. And so that really is what is the main issue with regard to us housing our charter school students. And we're also required to provide facilities sufficient to accommodate all of the charters in district students. So there needs to be at least eighty students, eighty in district students for us to, for a charter to be eligible for us to house them. And that we must be reasonably, our facilities that we offer must be reasonably equivalent to what we house our students in. And so, as if you were attending one of our schools. So we have a lot of different facilities in the district, from good facilities to bad facilities at need condition. So it's, and we do have to provide reasonably equivalent. Another thing is that facilities must be contiguous, they need to be near each other, and we're also required to furnish and equip. So we have been doing that, we've been furnishing and equipping. They've been providing their own hardware for their computers, but we provide them with the internet service. All the furniture and furnishings within the classrooms are provided by the district. And also during the facility request, charter schools will ask for a certain geographic area to locate the school in. And so we have to make reasonable efforts to offer facilities in the geographic area that they wish to locate. Now, the other thing that the district is able to do is to charge a pro-rata fee, so a put fee, to the district, to the charters that occupy our facilities. So it doesn't cover everything, but it does cover some of our costs. So some of the legislation that is going through right now through the state is AD 1507, and also another one which is not up here, which is AD 1508. And we do have Mr. Ed Sciarro that can provide us more detail if there's any questions on these, on this legislation. But there is an active movement at the state level to start looking at the existing legislation, changing the existing legislation, and also doing study groups. The governor actually did ask Tony, Assembly Member Tony Thurman, to do a study group and come up with recommendations by July 1st to really examine, look at what's happening in the state of California because there's issues all over the state of California right now. So what can we do legally at this point with the existing law? Basically, we continue to negotiate a facilities agreement on an annual basis. The district is only required to offer a one-year term for our facilities agreement, or we can develop a long-term lease with a charter. Now, we've done that in a couple cases, we've done that with Caliber, and that with a long-term lease that we've entered into not only at Kennedy High School, but also at North Campus. And then also, there's been some lawsuits throughout the state of California. It's driving a lot of our legal allegations, one of which is the lawsuit that's in settlement that was done in Los Angeles. And so, none of these are, most of them I would say, and Mr. Scott would know for sure, that the districts have not been successful in defending. This is actually a map, and this shows all of the charter schools within our school district and where they're located. And the ones in bold are the ones that are actually housed in district facilities. And then you can see by the map, we tried to locate, you know, the dots where the charter schools are located, and they're concentrated in the Richmond area and also in the Hilltop area. And this is a map showing just those, those charters that we currently house in our facilities. So what are our issues that we're dealing with?
So, we're dealing with a range of issues, and that's really what we wanted to make clear to the community so you understand really what it is that we are working through. One is that charter schools are growing in enrollment and will ultimately need a long-term solution. And this could result in student displacement, legal challenges, and community opposition. So this is something that we're dealing with. We have two new charter schools that are co-located, one at Penole Middle, one at Cressby, that are set to grow if they reach their max enrollment to six hundred or eight hundred students. So we have limited facilities and limited funding to accommodate charter schools as they grow to full enrollment. And that's, as we've said, the real tension. We're also super excited and proud of the new school that we created at the district level, the West County Mandarin School, that's also growing, and we would very much like to find them a facility. They are in a small facility which can get them to maybe K2 or K3. But they are going to grow to K6 and possibly K8, and that's exciting for our district, and we'd like to find them a place as well. So, the timing needed to plan for these facility improvements does not align well with the Proposition 39 timeline. Another slide about the timeline, okay, so we'll talk about that. And also, where we are moving, Caliber, which was a charter school that was behind Kennedy High School in a set of portables there, they are moving to North Campus, which has been the home of our special education staff. So we will need to find another home for about a hundred staff members as well once they have to leave that facility, which is being changed. So let's talk about the timeline. Do you want to talk about the timeline?
Yeah. So on an annual basis, by November 1st, if the district, or if a charter wants facilities from the district, they submit an application by November 1st. And then between November 1st and January 2nd, the district is looking at the enrollment, projected enrollment of the charters and if there's any objections. We actually do submit a preliminary offer, subject to board approval, which would be to the charter by February 1st. And thereafter, it's basically a negotiation process. I'm very much involved in the negotiations with the charters. We actually, we look at the facilities, we walk the facilities, we talk to the principal, and we try to come up with a compromise that might go forward to the board. And so, those negotiations go on for several months up until the point we make a final offer to the charter school on April 1st, still subject to the board approval. And ultimately, the charter school can reject or accept that offer after we give them a final offer, and then the board has the authority to approve the final facilities agreement. So all of that is occurring between November 1st up to, say, May 1st or thereafter. And so if we're required to provide facilities to a charter, say, the next school year starting in August, that is really challenging for us to get facilities on the ground if we need to or modify facilities for a charter school. So that goes with the, that goes with the point of the Proposition 39 timeline is not aligned very well with the facility process. So this is a timeline that we have to deal with every year. So this is just clearly some data for us to be going through, growing charters, and also our Mandarin program. And so all these three charter, the two charters plus Mandarin, all need to find long-term solution. So we have Invictus, which is currently located at the Cressby site. And at full enrollment, they plan to be six hundred and forty students. And so their current anticipated, current anticipated grade offering, right now they're at grade seven, and they're approved to go up to grade 12. So, right now, we are negotiating the housing for them at Cressby for 1920, and that is the last year that we're going to be able to accommodate them at Cressby. Voices is currently a hundred and twenty-one students, and they plan to grow to five hundred students. So these two charters are big schools. They are a K2 right now, with plans to grow to a K6. And they're at Penole Middle School for this year, and then we're negotiating for next year for 1920 at Penole Middle School. Now, also, we have Mandarin, which Mr. Duffy spoke of, and we have a hundred and thirty-seven students at that site, and then located the former Sarah Campus. And we also want to grow that program to five hundred, to five hundred, six hundred students. Right now, they're a K2, and they will be going to a K6, possibly even a K8. And so, they reached full capacity at that campus by 2020. So we're going to have to figure out what we do with Mandarin for a long-term solution. So we have a lot of challenges with our facilities and how it's not only the charters, but especially our district programs. So these are some of the facility considerations that we've been talking about, we've been offering, and so forth. We have Penole Middle School, which I just spoke of, which is not a long-term solution for co-locating the charter. And we could explore adjusting boundaries at Penole Middle School, including those students feeding to Cressby, explore balancing enrollment in nearby school, all options to discuss and get feedback on. With Cressby, we're currently co-locating with Invictus, and we've been talking about that not being a long-term solution either. Now, we have the Wilson Temple Campus, which will eventually free up, and that is the campus that was formerly housed the Coromosse students when that building was under construction. We're building the new Wilson Campus, and that should be ready by 2021. So it's a temporary campus or a campus of portables that will be available. Possible solution for the Mandarin program, or a district school when Wilson vacates. And that capacity is approximately six hundred. We have Kennedy Temporary Campus, that is where Caliber is housed. And so Caliber is moving up eventually to the North Campus, probably in about three or four years. So that's a portable campus that will be available in the future for a district program or a charter potentially. Now, we've been talking a lot about different facility options because we're brainstorming on, okay, what do we do for our long-term solutions? And we have El Dorado. So those of you that are familiar with El Dorado, it's home of, we have a lot of professional development. That is a smaller school, there's probably about twelve or fourteen classrooms there. Adult education is currently housed there. And so that is a costly ability to upgrade for ADA. We currently have a, we don't have a kitchen in the building, and there's a lot of ADA issues on that site. To be able to house five hundred or six hundred students on that, on that site, it would be probably ten to fifteen million dollars. We have Adams, and Adams is a vacant site that we've had some issues and seismic issues with the classroom buildings. There's a possibility to construct a portable campus on the asphalt up there. To build a portable campus these days is probably about seven to ten million dollars for that number of students. So it's another pricey option. El Sabranti, it currently is housing some programs for the district. It supports special ed and also our, I believe, our Bright Futures is in that one, yes. And so, we wanted to add portables and house a program there. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for portable to put in facilities. Seaview, vacant land in the residential area, and that was, that's also something that is, it's a property that's more attractive for residential development rather than a school that's near a railroad. Harmon Knolls is another vacant piece of property that the district owns. That is one that hopefully we can build on the Highland, Highland Elementary site. We have some, it would be less costly to construct a new school for Highland at that site than in their current site, we determined just because of soils. Vista is another district facility currently housed, it's Vistaheim, the transition program. That site could potentially house five hundred, six hundred students. However, we have programs there, we have to displace, and so it's a challenging option. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for every portable that would have to be added there. And then also, existing sites with space. So we have an existing site, they like, for example, the Kennedy site will be built a portable campus. You could look at an option to build a portable campus on an existing site. But just portable campuses are not cheap, and they range from seven to ten million dollars for, to be able to serve that number of students.
Just, we have two more slides, and I think one of the things we really wanted to make sure to emphasize to the board and to the community is that we believe next year, for these two schools, Invictus and Voices, we can squeeze out, while it will be very difficult to share, sharing space for one more year. And after next year, that is all we can do. So then we will need to find a space for these two schools, assuming that Cressby and Penole don't have some dramatic drops in enrollment that makes a couple more classrooms available. So we want to make sure their enrollment stays strong. But ultimately, we don't believe that these two schools can stay there beyond 1920. So the huge challenge that we're going to be facing as a district and as a board is 2021 and beyond. And that's really what we wanted to make sure, very much emphasize. Mandarin as well, we believe Mandarin has one year, maybe two more years at that campus. So that is, we have a little bit more flexibility there with a possible second year. Suggestions for discussion? So I want to make a clear recommendation tonight to the board that we not consider closure or consolidation of Cressby and Penole. The enrollment remains three hundred and fifty or above. And really what I'm trying to do there is just make it very clear to our community that we're not looking at these schools as closure or merger, but if one of them gets to a significantly tough small point, then it's something that we should consider. And then that really goes to a bigger discussion about why families wouldn't be choosing the school and what we would need to do there. But I really do want folks to walk away, or to tell me and tell our team what you think. But we want certainly the community and we want teachers to feel like they can teach, they're not worried about mergers, closures, et cetera. They know they will be sharing for another year, and then we've got to find a long-term solution. As many of our schools get smaller, we are going to have to start to think about adequate school size so we can figure out how to run viable school programs against hard to sustain that. And then, we want to consider obviously all options to encourage neighborhood families to choose our district schools. So that's presentation. We didn't want to be too heavy on the slides. President Cass, I know sometimes you do clarifying questions and then board comment. So let us know how you want to do that, if you want, I'm sorry, public comment. If you want to go right to public comment, we can do that and then open up more discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I'd like to ask the board to pass the clarifying question before we go to public comment. And, well, let everybody speak who wants to speak. So board members, do you have any clarifying questions?
Yes, I have one question. The lawsuit with LA, do you know what year that was?
Two thousand and eight.
So that was ten years ago?
So there were, there was an initial lawsuit filed in two thousand and eight. It was settled in two thousand and ten. The court had jurisdiction of the settlement agreement. There have been subsequent lawsuits since then claiming violation of the settlement agreement that would come out of that. But that initial lawsuit where LAUSD said we have no room, that was filed in two thousand and eight.
And that was filed by CCSA?
Correct, and some individual charter schools in LAUSD and DAS.
Okay, do you know of any recent ones, any recent?
Where there was insufficient, I don't know.
Any lawsuits from that organizations?
Oh.
About charters, yeah.
About, specifically about Proposition 39?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a recent case that was settled in Ross Valley. And was, there are, there are, so there was a recent case in Ross Valley. There are Prop. 39 lawsuits filed all over the state. I can say it, it was some odd last year and year before that.
Yeah, so CCSA is very meticulous.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I want to say this following, it's heavy. So I'm trying to, can you go back to this slide with the recommendation?
Sure.
So the first recommendation, and thank you very, before I even start, thank you for the presentation. I think that this is a really important issue, and I'm glad that A-Space has agreed to have a conversation around this. And I know that you've been going and speaking to some school sites, and I want to say thank you for that, and I appreciate you for doing it. I also want to thank the public for coming out today because this is something that we need to be able to talk about as a community because this is something that definitely affects community. I think that this discussion, how it started, you know, I think sometimes it's not necessarily how something starts, but how things end, and you want it to end the right way. So I just want some clarification around the first bullet, to recommend to not consider closure or consolidation of Cressby Middle School and Penole Middle School if enrollment remains three fifty or above. So, is that your recommendation as a superintendent to the board?
That is my recommendation, yes. I think putting any type of hard number is always difficult. And so this is not to be where I want to set us up for, oh, this school has three hundred and fifty-one kids or three hundred and forty-nine kids. But what I don't want to do is say, at this time, we are not going to close or merge these schools, and folks don't really believe that. And so, they walk out thinking, and so I wonder, I'm thinking about how do we put a harder stake in the ground to say, there's a point at which we're getting extremely worried about the size of this school. And until then, we're not, and we're doing everything we can to make sure school is viable, the school is sustainable. And until then, we're not, and we're doing everything we can to make sure school is viable, the school is sustainable. But ultimately, what we believe, having talked this over many times, is we are going to have to find a solution for these two schools. And that solution is really, you know, we don't see that solution being at Crespey, at Knoll Middle. If you were to merge the schools now, there's more than a thousand kids that go there. So this was a way of saying, there's a point at which we're just, we're not going to think about this, we're not going to worry about this. But if we do get to this place and the enrollment's going under that number, then I think we're in a more serious situation. Because what we don't want to be in is in five years thinking about closure or something like that, or find ourselves in an Oakland situation. So I want us to be proactive. We know we're going to have to find some type of solution. But we also just want to let people know, hey, if you need to hold on to a number specifically, this would be the one.
So as far as enrollment and Crespey's concerned, where is it now?
Crespey's about four fifty and Knoll Middle's about five fifty.
Okay, so with Crespey being at four fifty, Knoll Middle being at five fifty. And I know we don't have a crystal ball and I can't tell the future. But do you have any reason to believe that in the next, I'm making this number up, four years, right? That either school, Crespey or, and I guess you can't kind of foresee some of this because we do projections. So do you have any reason to believe that Crespey or Knoll would drop below three fifty over the next four years?
I cannot see Knoll Middle losing two hundred students. I just, I don't see that from our projections. Crespey has lost a number of students. It would surprise me if they lost a hundred more. What we do know is, we don't have the charter numbers. About eighty percent of the families in both of those communities, slightly more in Knoll Middle, if they're choosing a district school, they choose their neighborhood school. So that's a number that we could pick up a little bit. But I don't, I would love to say absolutely not. I don't know. I mean, we have charters that are growing. We have another charter that's not ours, it's county, Making Waves Academy, that's also set to add additional seats. So there are some challenges certainly there. And what I also want to make sure that I'm saying is, that is not a number at which I'm saying we could close the school. I'm saying that is a number at which we should, if we're declining below that, we should get back into dialogue about what's happening there.
So that's sort of the caution number for you?
Yes.
Okay, and the reason that I'm, can I say?
I mean, the thing also to remember is these are two-grade middle schools. So they're, they're small in that sometimes we think of three fifty, or let's say four hundred is pretty small. But if it were a three-grade middle school, like in any districts, it would be six hundred, right? So it's not that tiny as a two-grade middle school compared to maybe a K to six school that has seven grades and is at three hundred or two seventy-five.
Do we know, so, but in your opinion, your thoughts right now, you don't see, definitely not Knoll, but you don't see Crespey either dropping to this caution number, we're calling it the caution number, right? But this caution number of three fifty, you don't see that happening over the next few years?
Few, I would say the next two, no. But if we extend that to four, I don't, I don't know. And I don't know if another charter will come to the board that's a middle school. The board will say, yes, we want to open that charter, or a county will say, yes, or. And those are things I just, I wish I had that, first of all. I don't know exactly what's going to happen over the next few years in terms of new seats that would be added in our district.
Okay, and then I just have one more question, and this is around the three fifty number. And I know I'm asking a lot of questions right now, but you know I announced that I was going to do the town hall.
Yes.
And I don't want to do something that's unnecessary.
Yes.
And so I'm hearing your recommendation for the first time now. And so I, I'm trying to crystallize the evidence in my mind around that.
And this is, you know, this is a number, this is a recommendation. You know, the board can feel strongly enough and say like, we don't want to have that conversation until it's three hundred or like, we want even a longer runway around that or something like that.
Okay, I guess my last question for now is with Crespey because that seems like it's the one with the lower enrollment. And that, it's a little more tenuous than Knoll. Is there, and you may not have tracked this, I don't know, but are there students who are leaving Crespey to go to Invictus? And the reason I'm asking this is because I'm trying to, again, in my mind, crystallize what could be partially responsible for numbers reducing if they do that.
I don't have the numbers on where the students in the zone go to charters. That's something we're working to collect. We do have them from, and I spoke to the Crespey staff about this, about where they go if they don't go to Crespey in our district. And it's really like a, it's a smattering of all the different middle schools, with maybe the majority going to Helms. But some kids find their way to, a few find their way to Knoll Middle, a few find their way to Korematsu, to Hercules, to Helms, to Mirabesa. So it's pretty wide-ranging, at least within our district.
Thank you very much.
I want to start off by saying also, thank you for making that here on a Thursday night and for your comments as well as for the presentation. I have one question, it's regarding the figure of seven to ten million to relocate a charter that was mentioned in the slides. So would that be a cost that would be shared and we would get that money back or part of that? Or is that something that we would completely be responsible for if we choose to relocate an existing charter into a portable building?
We pay for everything. The only thing we would see back would be an annual rent, if I'm wrong, correct me.
So, and I know this is, you know, on the spot, do you know like what figure that would be or an estimate?
The square foot cost is approximately six to six fifty right now. So if you look at the campus, at the Kennedy campus, the district receives approximately two hundred and twenty to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
And just to make that clear, for what was basically a ten million dollar build out over time?
Thank you for that clarification. I'd like to thank everyone for coming here. We need to have this conversation. I'd like to thank the staff for understanding. In my mind, it's been a couple, you know, we used to have the Schreeder and the Davis demographic studies that came out with some frequency. I haven't seen one for a while. So my only question right now is, are we going to see, are we thinking about creating, having those created for us? Again, and in particular, what was interesting in those was, you know, the table where it had all the schools of residence and schools of attendance, which is really extraordinarily useful in understanding where we're going to go. So do we have plans to do that again?
We do, we can actually get that for you anytime through our, we have a software called Decision Insight that maps everything. That's, that's exactly where I got the current data on where do the students in our district who don't, or who live in the Crespey attendance area, where they go, where they don't go. We did a study session on Stige and we showed you how many students, just move around, people. Or maybe not, okay. And that, for example, that's where we got some of the data on Stige and how many students from that neighborhood go there. So we actually have something, we have real-time data on how many students in a particular attendance area go to either their home school or go to a different school in the district. If they leave the district, it's harder for us to compile as cohesively, but that's something we're working on as well.
And is there, I think I hear you saying, like, it'd be really interesting, like, how many students there are in, you know, all in this catchment area regardless of whether they go in the district to a charter or like a lot of them end up going out to Arimah to go to school. So be, I don't know if there's a way to get the total number of students in a school's attendance, but that'd be really interesting. But I think that's the end of questions. So anything you want to do before we go to public comment?
Oh, sure.
Good evening, everyone, sorry for being tardy. I couldn't make all the traffic go away, so I tried. I have a catch-up question real quick, and I'm glad that we're sharing this with the public because oftentimes, at least this piece of info, has always been what we have to look at in closed session when we're making considerations on colocations. Did you talk about what the cost implications are in relation to choosing to co-locate? On how the difference of cost to district budget looks like? Is there a slide that I missed, or is there any way you can speak to that?
Well, I think that is, that's sort of the rub here, right? That co-location is the most, often the most affordable option because you have the classroom space already set up. And remember, it's not just the classroom space. When we build a portable city, we have to bring in a portable cafeteria, we have to bring in a portable multipurpose room, we have to bring in special kindergarten portables that have bathrooms inside of them or extra bathrooms. So that is the, it's the most affordable, but it also comes with a totally different kind of
Cost.
Cost.
Yeah, there's the disruption and the, yeah, emotional cost. But I think it's important for folks to understand that that's everything we weigh when we're required to meet a Prop Thirty-nine obligation, right? I'm getting it right, Prop Thirty-nine, right? I guess my props up sometimes, props left, maybe. So my challenge is then how do we make sure that folks understand and how we continue to codify what the legacy? This is a legacy cost as far as I'm concerned in relation to the transition when, for whatever reason, the state is mandating that we do a Prop Thirty-nine obligation. There are costs to the district no matter what we do. Whether we co-locate or we actually think about, which is rarely the case, but spending the exorbitant amounts of money to refurbish sites that won't have direct impact of this, of interrupting an existing program that's a full school, a service community school. So I'm just curious if we can start figuring out how to start logging that kind of data more often? Because there seems to be some disagreement as to whether there are, in fact, what are the costs in relation to the various aspects of making accommodations for charters. There are multiple costs that we bear whether we agree to authorize a charter or not. And I think this is the one that we're always weighed, that always weighs on me the most. Is I'm at the same time trying to, what are the implications in terms of budget? Because do we ever budget for these kinds of requests in advance? Do we have a crystal ball to know that they're going to come? And what is your sense of the implication? If we're not wedging for them, then there's cost to existing district budget and program as a whole?
Absolutely. It's, I think I'm speaking to your question just in terms of like how we've thought about this. I mean, this with Knoll and Crespey was our very first time having to co-locate. So our work over the past many years, people who preceded me, has been at the schools that we have, keep them whole. And now we're sort of hitting a space where we're running out of both space to build these portable cities and also money. So that's where it's starting to get much, much tighter around town.
What I think I'm hearing too is what your, the cost to the district in the event of a co-location to at least prepare for one. And so with regard to that, there are costs for staff leading up to it with regard to negotiations and the time put into analyzing the applications, the projected enrollment. So there's a significant amount of staff time. And then also in a co-location, the district also has to prepare the site, which could include playgrounds, fencing, access, parking, those sorts of things. So generally, I mean, I would just estimate, you know, just two or three hundred thousand dollars just of staff time and just preparing a site for a co-location generally on the average, I would say, without a lot of modifications.
Just wondering, not without, you know, adding more cost to cost, how do we start documenting that? I mean, I know that's one of the sets of information that the CDE and the SPI is trying to collect in terms of what are some ways we can have that ready to provide to CDE as they start to collect what the implications are for the cost to districts in relation to meeting the obligations of the Charter, School Act, and Prop Thirty-nine. Is that possible for us to start trying to put some data collection around that? I know it's part of the resolution that we passed as well.
No, I think there definitely is an opportunity for that. Every year, I mean, we have an upcoming, I mean, right now we're going through the process so we wouldn't, you know, have actual, we could do estimated for what's going on right now. But moving forward on future years, absolutely.
And then the last thing I want to talk about is, you're right, we're co-locating at a set of schools now. We're hearing more and more impact, but we've co-located before just in a separate way, which was build a little portable mini-city next to school city, next to existing sites like Stige and Kennedy. So the reality is, is that some parts of our district have already in fact, bearing the burden of co-location. And part of what we've also tried to do is figure out how to make sure that no one community is experiencing that burden and that dissonance and that emotional impact unduly more than any other part of the district. And so that's one of the other concerns that I think, I'm hoping we can have some dialogue around. Because you layer that on top of the fact that we have a facilities program where we're trying to upgrade and meet the needs of requirements around current maintenance and then keep, give reason for folks to stay in our schools so that we're able to then make sure we're providing adequate services for them too. So it's all connected.
Just, I'll just speak on that really quickly, and I'm glad you brought that up. It is certainly a consideration because we don't want to create every single offer in the same neighborhood. Every co-location or every place we can offer is in South and Central region. We feel like that would put extremely undue pressure on our traditional schools for all of the reasons that folks talk about. So we have been thinking about how do we spread that out. Of course, we're looking at what's available and what's existing, but it is something we keep in mind in terms of not overwhelming a single community with multiple schools. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll be starting the public comment here. We did receive a written note, and I should have you prepared to start that. This is from Lou Rad, he's a student at Valley View, and he gave us the name, and we talked about it, and took a hurry. Yes, he's a fourth grade, and he said, I love my school, Valley View. I love my school because the kids have I love my school because kids have fun and get respected. I love my school because my heroes are there and my heroes are the teachers and principal. All those people encourage me to do the right thing. I never saw a kid push me on purpose. Never, never saw a kid call me a mean name on purpose. And I never saw a teacher be rude. I came to this school since kindergarten and all I saw was respect and respect and more respect. And this is how much I care about my school, Valley View." Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. So Dr. Eric, if you call the first vice speakers, and also we, we said two minutes and we don't actually have the timer. We've got one more. Thank you.
So we have a total of nineteen speakers now, and the first five this quarter, David Forsack, Chris Risky, Giorgio Cosentino, Katie Harless, and Cam Stewart.
I have to go first. Sorry, I was excited. All right. And I go? All right. From my perspective, I've got two children at Valley View, fourth and second grade. And?
Nobody.
Sorry, I'm a little like abandoned down. All right, I lost fourth and second. All right. So really I want to kind of address the board as we go through this process. I'll speak loud. Can you reset?
Reset.
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 Thank you. Am I good?
Much better.
All right. So one thing I want to address, words considered, as there is, as there are talks around closing a school, there are best practices that are out there in the Department of Education. So that the board really takes the methodology, relates together in facts, so really clear data from school level around what really the enrollment figure needs to be from a school funding standpoint. And then also factoring what the ancillary aspects of a closure could be, that could be from the central district, that could be causing this closure. So just to think about that. One of the things I would recommend is establishing a committee. And I recommend that that committee meets more often with the community to be involved to get, to allow transparent and clear factual dialogue. The other thing that I kind of picked up in slides was my question, a logical, and I don't apologize for it. How do you allow an approval of a charter school with a minimum of eighty students to a facility, when as a district you would close a public school with that level of enrollment? What this confirms is the pipeline of incubating charter schools that will draw enrollment from public schools, which then result in public school closures and transferring the facilities to charter schools. So I just don't understand how that happens. And then with regards to getting tossed back for tenant improvements for charter schools in any lease agreement, you would build in the lease agreement the tenant improvements in the price per square foot, so the lease fee to pay back every dollar for the last order, why isn't that being negotiated? And I think that's the summary of the, okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Chris Woski and I've been a district teacher for fifteen years and I work as an instructional coach in the department as a district instructional coach. I want to share a little bit about my own personal experience as a teacher and parent in this district. As a teacher, I was really proud, part of Coronado Elementary for more than a decade, part of redesign and building process there. We went from being a school that was going to be closed to a school that now is a beautiful facility and houses, inserts the Coronado neighborhood. My own children lived in that Valley View for six years and when I started there, it was just a very empty campus in the same way Coronado was when I started teaching there. But we were excited because on the PR, there were these posters that told us about the school that was going to be built, completed in, I think, the sixteen, seventeen school year. And we were excited about that. It was really encouraging, felt really confident we could put our students there and know that by the time they were in third, fourth grade, we had a brand new facility to attend. And unfortunately, that's not what happened. And now we were halfway there, we're in a temporary campus, but we're also in this kind of limo and so are all the families that are thinking about starting kindergarten at Valley View because there's no real commitment from the district to rebuild that school. Even the old school was, you know, taken down and we're in this portable campus. So it's a weird place to be in. What I'd like to see, what I hope will happen, as hard as it may be Fisher, is that there will be a firm commitment from the district to rebuild Valley View, to make it out whatever works out as far as the K six or K eight campus. But it's so important that, you know, we and future families know that the commitments there from the district to rebuild the school so it will serve the, serve the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, Giorgio Cosentino, former district teacher, taught for two years almost twenty years ago, Richmond High School and a current district parent. And I just wanted, I'm learning here, was, was been unfolding. It seemed like I turned my head away and I looked back and I'm just kind of shocked and stunned right now at everything that I've been hearing. I remember when I was teaching, there was a lot of safety issues with facilities at that time. And then I know we've since made a lot of progress in the district with our facilities. They're, they can be safer and safer. And my daughter's school, Aloney, it's incomplete, but what was in place is new. She loves it and so we're grateful for that. I just want to make sure that I'm listening to some of these scenarios that we just never go backwards in respect to safety. So I don't know how, you know, I'm worried about these, you know, two schools, you know, sharing a campus and I just, you know, both in my mind, I had a vision of the potential safety scenarios and, you know, I just want to make sure we keep our kids safe, safety first. And I just want to wish, you know, the school board, staff, the community, everyone the best of luck during this very challenging time. I just can't believe this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie Harless and I am a district parent. I'm with the DANSA PTSA. I'm speaking just to myself today. I have the benefit of having my kids go to Valley View, Crespi, DANSA. They've had a great, great journey. Personally, my own horizon in K twelve is not prolonged because my youngest is Howard Jr., but, and it's, but I think DANSA families very much care about this issue, both because many of them still have kids in elementary schools and at middle school. But, you know, we care about what will it be from K to twelve? How will things roll into DANSA? Will the foster community and student success, will it, how will it impact teachers and staff here and will it, or will it lead to further attrition? So coming in here before seeing the presentation, those were all the things, you know, rolling around in my mind. I'd say I'm reassured, getting some clarity with your recommendation, that I'm taking it maybe back a level to see, you know, what are the district challenges versus a, yikes, Crespi's closing, you know? So that's been really reassuring tonight. And I really love to focus on, you know, the superintendent turn to, you know, we do need to also just really, really focus on the why attrition and, you know, how do we, how will we turn that around? And lastly, I just reminded by someone to, that all of us who care in addition to participating in these like this, we should be getting in touch with Superintendent Thurman in a big way to let him as well, you know, know about our concerns related to the challenges that our district is facing.
Thank you.
Cam Stewart? Sorry, I wasn't prepared for the next one. Thank you. I just want to say that I'm concerned that
Move the mic, Lou.
Oh, sorry. I'm concerned that we've been set up, the DANSA family from Valley to Crespi, that we've been set up with failure because, like the gentleman before said, that Valley View, because this fund's got spent, another school, Valley, didn't get rebuilt, the schools in the states are now with the cordials. I'm concerned because one of the things that I heard that was discussed, they were going to be combining, giving Valley and Alinda. I just feel like, you know, now we're in cordials and cordials are expensive, you don't want to keep cordials. That's not our fault. The other thing I would just say was, I know enrollment sort of has been low at Valley, but I've noticed that there are many new families that have moved into the neighborhood and that, that Valley was definitely one of the reasons why we moved to that neighborhood. That was one of the reasons that we chose where we were living. For Crespi, I was told by someone else who was in the precinct that Crespi would not need to combine with Aloney, it'd be a Roman priest. But I just recently asked a sixth grader if they were, you know, they were excited to go off to Crespi and I stood, they said, "No, Crespi's closing." So we already have kids that are people that are making other decisions because of what they've heard. I just feel like that really, that that's, we've been set up to failing. I, you know, the last two weeks we've gone, I've gone to, Mr. Candace, he said, "Oh, all our graders can't read." And I feel like that sends out a really negative message. We have really good schools here at West Contra Costa. And one more thing that I was thinking is that, you know, I, I understand that people might want to go to a man room school, but it seems kind of strange to me that you would set up something not knowing that there wasn't enough space to put it. You know, we have Washington, Washington's a dual-merchant school, but it's in a local school and local students still there too. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next five speakers are the following in this order, Alexandra Buckner, Eduardo Martinez, Judith Oliver, Tammy Campbell, and Andrew Woolley.
A little tall for this. My name is Alexandra Buckner. I spoke to the school board before, I yelled at the school board before, but today I'm going to try not to do that. I want to thank Mr. Jacky who came to Crespi and talked to us. I really appreciate it and I definitely think more of you now maybe than I did before. Maybe I didn't know as much before, so thank you. I want to thank the school board members who voted to do the, whatever, the moratorium on new charter schools. And I want to make sure everyone in this room knows who voted for it. Mr. Phillips, thank you. Ms. Lara, thank you. Mr. Nance Jarvis, thank you. Ms. Quives, thank you. Mr. Candace, I was very disappointed that you went one hole out in something that was clearly your path and you couldn't even put your name to stopping new charter schools coming into this district. Not stopping the ones that are already here, but to ask this state to put a moratorium on charter schools starting this district, that was tremendously disappointing. Also disappointing to hear you ask for, you always want stats, you want the stats on who's thieving, all this kind of stuff, but you don't want the stats on whether charter schools are actually teaching your students. Let's find out the stats. I know the stats in my family. We went to Valley View, we went to Crespi, we're now at DANSA. My kids are having great education. They're in trigonometry as ninth graders. They're taking Spanish three as ninth graders, okay? Stay with your public schools, your true public schools, and let's support the people on this school board that really want the best for all of our kids. And I mean, all of our kids, not just the kids that want to go to charter schools because they don't want to pay for unionized teachers and they don't know what's going on.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm a fellow district council member. I'd like to start off by thanking Ron Kosnick or Doc Kosnick for doing the film review these. I'm grateful to watch the meeting at
Crespi.
Crespi, yes. And so, and that brought to mind some things that the only public aspect of charter schools is their use of public funds. We know that some of the charter schools have cash, but they're only interested in taking funds from the school district. For instance, Ron Bellar offered to buy Adams so that he could turn it into a Caliber school. He didn't offer to improve the building so that Caliber school could be in a district building. If he were truly thinking public, he would have offered that. We know that Aspire is building schools using public funds on private property in their day. If they were truly thinking public, they would build public schools to increase the ability of our school district to house students. So my question is, we have Alvarado. Why can't one of those charter schools offer to remodel Alvarado school so that it can be used as a school? They have the money. So I also wanted to say that public schools are actually dividing our school district. Having two schools in one campus is a perfect example of that division. We're streamlining administration for public schools at the same time that we're increasing administration through the creation of charter schools. That doesn't make any sense. And I'm wondering where Invictus is, Invictus is planning to get 559 extra students and Crespi only has 450. Where are those students coming from? Are these students in this district or are they coming from outside?
My name is Judith Oliver. I'm a longtime Richmond resident. Both my children were students at Crespi and received a great education there. I am still currently a district parent. I want to thank Superintendent Duffy and his law for your presentation. I'm extremely glad to hear that the closures of Pinole or Crespi are off the table, at least for now. So I appreciate that. And I very much appreciate the prior speaker who mentioned that this board mostly voted for a moratorium on new charters. I do understand that the true issue here is that our state laws need to be changed. California does not find our students sufficiently and the laws around charters allow school districts to be overrun at many levels above them. And that's an issue that I really wish our district and our board could create committees and education for our parents and our community so that we can all understand what's going on and we can have grassroots movement to change those laws. Charter schools are cannibalizing our public education. And if you want to see where it's going, look at Oakland. I don't want that to happen to my district. And as a parent and a community member, I voluntarily deserve on any committee that would help prevent that. Thank you.
My name is Tammy Campbell. I've served on a redistricting committee for this district. I've served on the budget committee for this district. So I've been really highly involved for years. So I'm a little concerned, we talk about facilities, I'm more concerned about the operating funds. Given the fact that years ago, we had to close schools to meet the funding crisis. We all know that eighty-five percent of our budgets tend to be labor. So if you have declining enrollment, which is what I see now in comparison to what I saw five years ago, and you're opening more schools, then we're already in for a bigger budget crunch than you think. And it has nothing really to do with facilities, that's just the icing on the cake. So I think we need to discuss that. Having said that, I would prefer and would like that the city council, that somebody come to the city council in Pinole and talk about the impact to our community and our kids. I would also like to suggest that the school board members pick a city. Uh, I would also like to suggest that the school board members pick a city and start going to those city council members because you're gonna need to start building a relationship with local communities that are gonna save our public schools. Parents, I want to encourage you to rally, especially at the elementary school level because when my kids were at El Horso, went to Pinole Middle, I would go back and tell them, don't be scared. That was the best education my kid got in middle school. So I think we can't, we have to dialogue now. I don't think we can wait. We need to encourage everybody to get involved. And the fact that I heard tonight also, you have decision insights, you know where the numbers are. How come you don't know where the numbers for charter schools are if they're using our public dollars? I really like to know that. So I encourage anybody, everybody, participate. Let's get the word out. Thank you.
How's it going everybody? This is Andrew Woolley. I'm a used teacher at Richmond High School, type of my school's in this district, I'm just a student K eight on Pinole Valley. Um, so I know we're all talking about charter schools and stuff and I think I'm a terrible person, but I'm gonna keep it focused on current schools and decline of them. As you guys know, uh, as Richmond teachers, we've been out over the past two days and that's a large part because our infrastructure is something from the nineteen fifties that we deal with. And some of you come and talk to me and go, oh, this is terrible. But it's four and a half years later, it's the same thing. I've had a broken little model for four and a half years. I turn on breakers for lights and yet I walk into a college right now. So there have been vast changes in the past couple of years and it's actually a response to my, when I ask for something to happen. And I agree with that a lot, but I'm also concerned, well, we have no sample group rebuilt at Richmond High School, the largest school in, in, in the district serves the most of that rich population. No plan to rebuild that, that, that long, the bunker that we teach in. I'm just concerned, I'm even concerned about here, if you don't maintain buildings, you're not investing, you're just buying something that is deteriorating like a high one. So I'm very concerned about that. We have radical investigations at our school, you guys know about, there is some upgrades in the school, we're gonna build a dance room half the size of our current dance room, weight room half the size of our current weight room, a small gym, fully outf, not up, from whatever, not even fully outfitted with sound system and stuff. We have a big gym that doesn't have a sound system. Kids have to fight and complain to get the heater fixed because we have a problem mobilizing our families. And that is a deep issue of we're continually trying to work on that school. But only person from, from, from a Richmond school, I drive, because me, that's because I live up the street and I'm, I'm, I'm sitting teaching in a junky old building and losing teachers partially due to that reason. Go ahead and fight charters, make it so people want to stay in our schools. Because the people are rich and still at school every day.
A lot of my speakers are John Ames and Amy Wimmer, Lauren Farrell, Kate Davis, and Anthony Tate.
Good evening, I'm John Ames, I'm a Valley parent, I know me already. So I was a middle school in Massachusetts, I was in sixth through eighth middle school and I had a difficult time. I was the sort of kid who was, uh, bullied and picked on, I was a smart kid and I got in trouble, I got in a lot of kids fights. So why am I bringing this up? I don't really support eighth grade schools. I think eighth graders in the same facility as a kindergarten is not good. Kids need their space and they need that training to get into high school. Sixth grade is a pretty good choice, I, I like that. If you're considering that with Crestby or Pinole Middle, then I would support that. However, not if it would affect our community schools of Alinda, Valley View and Murphy and Sheldon. Yes. So, um, again, I want to thank the board for, and the facilities, uh, people for washing coffee, I appreciate it. And I want to remind you that we gotta stick to the master plan. That was a commitment made with the community and it's a long-term master plan, we have to stick to the master plan. And I recognize that the master plan doesn't say anything about the need for extra charter school facilities. So I'm just gonna come on and say it. Build a temporary campus for charter. That's what Jeff did, they don't care. Valley View's in, uh, portables. I like the portables, they're nice. Get some more, you know, big deal. Charter needs some school, build a portal. Do not close Crestby. Do not close, uh, Pinole Middle, I can do that name, so I, do not nourish Pinole, Valley View and Sheldon, don't try to do any more stuff. And remember what happened with Miss Wong?
Yes.
Valley, don't be Valley boy for her.
No.
Wherever I do that, so figure out that.
Hi, thank you all for hosting this meeting tonight, thank you for your presentation. Um, I appreciate this very much. I just wanted, a couple of things, and I know you guys have already heard this from me and that you're addressing my concerns, um, tonight was a great example of that, thank you. I just want to emphasize again the importance of the communication with the parents. Um, it's, I think that, um, we just need to make sure that the parents know what's going on, the, the earlier speaker who said that their kids are making plans around the coach at Crestby is an example of that. I also want to ask, um, I remember at the last, at the board meeting where this was brought up, Superintendent Duffy said that he could form a task force. Um, I would like to know what is going on with that task force and I would like to encourage the board to hold whatever, it, it sounds like there is no longer a task. So I'm just wondering, what is the task that the task force is working on? And I would like to encourage the board to hold that task force accountable by asking them what they are doing, uh, what studies are being done, publicizing that information to the public. Um, but I think when parents say that we want more communication, we're not necessarily saying that we want to, um, I do think that you guys do a good job of asking us what we think. I think part of that also is that we want to, uh, know that you are listening to us and we want a two-way conversation. So we want to know what you are thinking, what you are doing with the information that we give you. And so I want to encourage you to hold that task force accountable to keeping this a two-way conversation. Ask them what they're doing, ask them to give us a timeline, ask them their specific measurable goals that you can say, hey, you said you were gonna do this by this date and you didn't do it, what's going on? Uh, so that's, um, my main comment and I thank you again.
Hello, my name is Laura Farrell and I've, I've been a longtime resident of the May Valley. In fact, I went to Valley View, I went to Sheldon Dell, went from kindergarten to Valley View, to Norman Crestby, then DANSA, now I'm a teacher at Valley View Elementary. Um, I was here years ago when May Valley was going to become its own school district, but I can remember my mom and I having discussions about this, that the reason why we didn't segregate ourselves is because we wanted a diversity community here in this area. And, um, you know, all the rumors that are flying about Valley View maybe closing in here, it would be a travesty for this to happen. Valley View is a beautiful environment for children, Long Crestby is a great place. And, um, the thing is, is you know, every day when I go to work, I'll see a house for sale in this area and it goes like that. You know, we all voted, the, you know, we, we voted in favor of the bonds in the past in, in, in the thoughts that the school's gonna be rebuilt and there will come a time, you know, the, the houses are going for a lot of money and the thing is, is, um, people want to live next to Valley, they want to live in this area. They want their children to be able to go to the schools where theirs paying big money, big property taxes. So I just say, please, preserve the May Valley. It was originally to make this area better, don't destroy it, please, thank you.
Kate Davis?
Hi, my name is Kate Davis. Um, thank you for holding this meeting. Uh, I have a daughter who goes to Valley View and I'm a teacher at Carmasue. My daughter is a first grader and she was lucky enough to have Mrs. Farrell last year and, uh, now has Mrs. Lizzy who's also here. Um, we moved here five years ago and we bought our house because we wanted our children to go to Valley View. Um, we heard about the principal, the amazing teachers, and the active parents club. Um, Valley View is the gem of this school district. Um, if you close Valley View, you are going to lose some really great families. Uh, my daughter is also an IEP student and she has gained so much confidence in the past few years due to her excellent teachers. Um, her scores, we just got her literacy scores back. From the beginning of the year until now, her fluency went from eight words per minute to fifty-nine, decoding from thirty-three to sixty-four, and her high frequency words from thirty-four words correctly to one hundred and forty-nine. When we heard about the possibility of Valley View closing, I talked to my husband about potentially moving if that happened. My daughter unfortunately heard me say that and she started crying. She loves her school, she loves her teachers. Um, these rumors and this lack of commitment to her schools is going to affect enrollment if it hasn't already. Thank you so much.
Hello, board, staff, uh, parents in the audience and teachers. I just wanted to say thank you, uh, for the vote, um, for the last, uh, meeting, I think was a good, uh, representation of what the community is looking for. Just to kind of slow things down, I, I assist the board. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, facilities wise, that's, that's my business, that's what I do for a living. And, you know, going through the schools, we tell that there's a lot of infirmity and something, it's not something that's news to anybody. But I think moving forward, you know, when you hear rats, you hear generators not working, you hear all of these things that are happening in the schools, um, the floor coming up, that's all these things to a parent, right? You know, putting a parent head on, um, it's difficult to, to understand, right? Thinking to yourself, what is going on with my child's school? And facilities wise, we know that this is a money thing and we have to make sure that we're maintaining our, our equipment and putting the maintenance in there. The point I'm trying to make is that, you know, with the rise in charter schools and, and, you know, the need in our schools puts a stress on our system and we have to start asking ourselves, how do we, you know, relieve that stress? So is consolidating and reopening, I mean, what does that plan look like to get our schools to a, a point where we're not dealing with all of these issues? I know there's a facilities plan out there, but we need something, I think, a little bit more regular for each school so they have an understanding that this is how our schools are going to improve over time. And I think that's what a lot of parents are looking for, a lot of teachers are looking for, is where is the investment? Um, and I think we need to be able to show that in the future, so. Uh, at least he asks, um, but I know they, it, this board is showing a lot of promising business there and staffs doing great as well, so thank you to you all.
The next five speakers are Skanda, Tuo, Amy, Daniel, Caroline, Rickle, Steve, Snake, and Winnie Bear. Hi.
My name is Shawna Caldwell, I am a teacher at Crestby, a parent of two students at Valley View and a product of this district. Please, give us a shot here at the May Valley School District, the May Valley area. We've been shot down before. It's a very tight-knit community, a very strong community, and I do have a couple of things to say. First of all, Crestby is the only middle school in the district that has not been rebuilt. DANSA actually had enrollment to where they were considering closing it until they built this beautiful new school and wonderful things had, had, have happened here. With that being said, please give us a chance. We have a great staff at Crestby who have wonderful students. Making Waves. Making Waves doesn't take students from May Valley, we make too much money. Making Waves is designed for students from Richmond and San Pablo who are low income. I worked at Making Waves as an after-school program. My kids do not qualify going there. So Making Waves will not take more students. I ask you a couple of things. First, go to Pinole Valley or Pinole Middle during drop-off pickup time, double it. Come to Crestby during drop-off pickup time and double it and see what happens, see where you're gonna get stuck. And finally, the data and Mr. Qu, uh, Biden or Rentschel can see to this, states that DANSA students coming from Crestby have higher GPAs than they do from the charter schools.
Hi, I'm gonna change it up a little and represent West County Mandarin School. Um, I think we made a good impression last night in letting you know that we are a thriving school. We do have a really strong school community that comes from the whole district. Um, we are a district school, so we are keeping money within the district. Um, and I just wanted, uh, I'm, sorry, I'm gonna do that, I'm, I am Amy Cantu. My son is a first grader, um, at the school. And I'm also speaking on, um, as part of the permanent site committee at our school, which is comprised of roughly twenty students, or sorry, parents. Um, some of the things that I wanted to bring up, um, from our committee, um, is that location is something that's super critical for our school. We're located in Richmond, where we are, um, allows an equal access from all parts of the district. And losing that would be really, um, a hardship for us because, um, faculty, language school is really difficult. If you don't know Mandarin, um, you, students that we lose in the third grade, it's gonna be so hard for us to find new students to replace them. Um, in addition, uh, we do have a goal of being a really diverse school. It's an important part of our community. The board has asked us to set aside fifty percent of our seats for low-income students, language, English language learners and foster youth. Moving us in the other direction would make that really difficult for us to make that fifty percent. Being a standalone school is also really important for our school. Because we're a language school, um, we need to maintain the culture and the language. Cohabitating with other schools is difficult to maintain that. I think the most critical thing that I also just want to say is that we're a really thriving school that we, I have time. But I just want to say that we appreciate all the support that we've gotten from the board and we hope that you consider us as you for it and you decide where you want to place us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Caroline Ratale, I am in Crestby, math fabulous, computer teacher, I also run girls for code and math book. I also just bought a house in the May Valley area and was intending to send my kids to Valley View for the townhomes. Want to say that Crestby currently has large band, Spanish, fabulous computers, map one-eighty, reading one-eighty, and an outstanding SPED program that is trying to expand, um, I mean, which the current Invictus has. Um, also currently only three students from our, from our school, from Crestby, moved over to Invictus this, during this current school year. Also want to elaborate on- Also want to elaborate on what we're expecting. Almost half of it said that 40% of entering ninth-grade students into Deanna from Crespey are, have math and language credits for high school versus 0% from the charter schools. 40%. And moral of the story, Crespey has a lot to offer and this announcement should be close to it. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a father of two at Valley View right now and I got one more that's been there a couple of years. I also went to El Sprany Elementary, Crespey, Deanna for a minute, and then Pinole. So I'm from the area and I love Valley View. It's an awesome school, please don't close it, but my kids are not going to Crespey. If you want to retain high-performing kids, which my kids are, what you have to do is make sure that Crespey performs at the same level that the charter schools are doing. I want my kids to go to Crespey, but when I look up, the performance is bottom 20% of the country. Making Waves is performing at 50th percentile. The safety issues that exist at Crespey, one, I wish they were more transparent. But if you look up the data, all it says is that this school's flagged for having high suspension rates. I want my kids to be safe and I don't believe that to be a safe school. I wish there were. It's still about a few years, so hopefully you guys knew something because I really would like my kids to go there. But I can't send them there if they're not going to get educated and if they're not going to be safe. Those are the basic things. So I want to thank you all because I know you guys are working hard, but you need to make a big change and that big change might be merging Crespey and Pinole. I don't know what it is, but we need a big change because for years, Crespey's been unsafe and it hasn't been for long. You can look up the data, the data are there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I haven't been to a board meeting for probably 25 years. I think the last one I went to was with Walter Marx. And he told everybody, everyone around me, but me, and everyone else, well. My son and daughter was part of that program and I believe those were called charter schools. My son did not do well. And I feel it's a real eye-opener to me that we have so many charter schools in our district. We need to put it in public education. These children that we are sculpting now are our future. They will be the people who are running for office and will be doing things, voting on things when I'm at home. And I want them to make good decisions. I don't have a child in the district, but I am a taxpayer and I am very concerned. And now I see, I will start watching more of the board members of who to vote for. Who is the right one to vote for? And I'm going to spread this word within my community. And I think we have to pay more attention to everything and we have to think of these general lines. And I'm sorry for the charter schools, but I didn't see anything work and was positive about them. And so, money has to be put into public. And as far as one last concern is, if these schools close, Pinole Middle School is brand-new. And where's my tax dollars going? The other thing is being involved in Pinole Valley traffic. If you put more kids at that campus, the road can't handle the traffic. Parents run off with kids and hold the traffic every morning and every afternoon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The public comments, I really appreciate the comments of everyone. So now, unless the staff has any additional comments, we're going to help the board to talk about what they heard and what they thought.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank the audience and everyone who participated today and the comments they gave. What we need to hear from you is your feedback and what you think about your schools because these are your schools. They are not the district. The district is here as an institution and institutions are meant to serve people, not themselves. So I want to thank you for that. I just want to make sure that I get some clarification. And this is just me being super sure. During one of the public comments, I can't remember who it was, but someone made a comment about the presentation that took place, I think it was at Crespey. Mr. Duffy, so this one is to you. They said, they were told that if Crespey increases enrollment, that it wouldn't close. And tonight, you said your recommendation was that you would not recommend considering closure or that you would not recommend considering closure unless, or consolidation unless enrollment drops below 350. So I just want to make sure that what the individuals spoke about tonight was not a recommendation. I don't know what was said at the other meeting I wasn't there. But that your recommendation to us is not to consider closure or consolidation unless enrollment drops below 350. So, can you hear me? Again, it might not have been written out there, okay?
Can people hear me? Yes, okay. So, yes, that's my recommendation. And I want to be clear, I'm not saying that when the school, if the school were to get below that number, that we will want to close the school. I would say we need to come back and have a discussion. What we talked about at Crespey was that there is no, if the enrollment stays the same at Crespey, there is no room for Invictus to grow there beyond next year, the couple of classrooms that they're going to be giving next year. So what we don't want to happen, though, is Crespey loses a ton of enrollment after next year and there's some more classroom space to give to Invictus. That's really, we don't want that to happen. So we want Crespey's enrollment to stay strong, we want to figure out what we need to do there, and we want everybody to feel like they can walk away tonight knowing that as long as enrollment is in good shape, you know, or doesn't drop in some crazy precipitous way in the hundreds of kids, we're not considering closure or merger.
Okay, thank you for that. So I want to take just a couple of minutes and talk about this town hall that, and I'm speaking in past tense now, that I was doing. The reason that I decided to do that was because I wanted us to have, and when I say us, I mean folks in the community, to be able to have a space to talk about their concerns around what may have happened with Crespey because there was nothing ever that was set in stone. There were things that were floated and I wanted folks to be able to have a space to talk about that for however long they needed to. But as I said earlier in this presentation, I don't want to do anything that's unnecessary. And my goal always is to help and not to cause undue tension. So that said, listening to your presentation, since I've been here, I wasn't paying attention. I actually sent, you know, to the president of the Parents Club at Crespey, I told her what your recommendation was and I said that based on that recommendation, I think that we should cancel the town hall next week. And then I heard the woman come up and say what she said, so I wanted to get double clarification. I have that now, so I am going to be canceling the town hall next week because I don't think it's necessary with what you presented here on this evening. And I will, I'm saying that now, I will post that and if the communications department can help get that out as well.
And we talked about that, we'll have the communications department formalize the summary of tonight's discussion and recommendations. And also just want to make sure, you know, we'll hear from all of the board members that they may support that so that I know that that's certainly what the full board would like to direct me to do. And yes, thank you for, you know, thinking about how to make space for that. Glad we're doing it tonight and well worked with Mr. Walton to get a communication out. It's clear that you can go over to constituents and tell them.
Right, but in addition to that, what I was, and I was talking with you about this on the line, but I was also talking about, I'm actually going to put something out saying that what I was going to put out this week that I am going to cancel. So thank you very much for this space.
Okay, thank you all. Let's see. I want to give a call to action. There are some bills coming through on the desks of several people in Sacramento. One of them would address the appeal process where a charter could no longer go above, you know, override the district decision. The district says no, they can't go and go to the county or go to the state. So that's a pending bill. Another one is that a district can't consider financial impact. That is also a pending bill. And then the issue of a statewide pause, statewide for charters, new charters. So please, call, text, email Nancy Skinner and Buffy Wicks. They're the ones who are making the laws for California and they need to feel our pressure. They need to feel it. Because you know what? I really think this is the year the charter industry is going to feel pain. We had one victory with SB 126 and that brings me to the great suggestion I heard of having a committee, a community committee, possibly working with the charter oversight office so that we could, you know, we passed the moratorium, now there's SB 126. How do we enforce all of this? How do we, you know, see if people are in violation? What will the penalties be? All of those things need to be worked out now. So I hope the parents will be involved in that, PTAs, et cetera. And the last thing I want to say is that, to everybody, and assure you that any vote to approve giving any facilities to any charter, I will vote no.
So I want to start by saying thank you for everybody, again, like at the beginning, for the staff, for Mr. Duffy, for the board members, and for everybody else that's here representing different areas of the district in May Valley. I think that the biggest observation I want to make tonight is that we wanted to be proactive about getting information to you better than we have in the past. And I think that having the study session, having the public be really informed about what's going on and engaging in getting the input from you is crucial to any decision that we make. I want to clarify too that there are no school closures that we're voting on. So it's nothing that's happening right now. And we're having this discussion to look into the future and to what we may be facing. We have represented with information about collocations and what that means short-term versus long-term. I think we understand that short-term, it may be the most viable, affordable way to deal with placement of charter schools. But I think that long-term, we have learned now that that's going to cost us more in different ways that we have to spend to relocate charters when they're growing and we don't have a place for them. So I think that my main takeaway from what I heard, specifically from parents, is that we need to have a more proactive communication. And I think that's something that our district can probably look into is having a digital newsletter that comes out monthly. That way it doesn't really cost us money to print it and send it, but also just have it posted next to the agenda in the downtown building. And I think that will keep our communities involved and even if they can't make it to the board meetings, just have that knowledge and be present in what's going on with the kids. And I think, you know, the premise that I heard is that we have limited facilities, a strain, and limited funds to deal with. And I think that that's a really fair and valid premise. I think that our approach needs to be larger and I think that, I mean, the argument that I'm hearing too is that we need to have support from the state. So it doesn't just end here. This is where it really begins and I just want to reiterate, this is about kids, right? We want academic rigor, we want to have academic achievement, we want academic support. And as a teacher, that's what I want to ensure that all of our kids have, right? And one of the parents mentioned about Crespey and wanting to have those things at Crespey and feeling that it's going to be the school where you want to send your kids. We want to do that. And I think that we need to have a more robust way of getting that to parents. I think that having language programs, having specifically academic programs to target populations of students who are underrepresented in the sciences is really important too, in the arts. So I'm really excited about what we're going to be doing and I like that we did this tonight and that we're doing this right after we have a new board together because I think we have a lot to do in these next two years. So thank you for being here today for your input and thank you for the staff for putting this together and Mr. Duffy for meeting with the families before this too. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I echo the appreciation for being here tonight. I do think that one of the things I've learned since being on the board for four years and then getting re-elected for another two is that, and you're going to hear me say it over and over again, is I can only solve problems that I have resources for which to solve them. And everything's possible. And most of, everything you said is what we want. The challenge has always been is how do we create the resources? So I do think we need to start a conversation where, we were hearing pushback about how we funded the construction of new schools previously through the generous generosity of our community through the bond program. Well, there was some oversight, some administrative review that needed happening. That's happened now. We have folks and the staff is clear about what the oversight and the way we figured out how to make sure our facilities, construction program would run better in the future. We have a master plan that says we're committed to building every school that's on that. Your schools are on there. If I could build them right now, I would. I would vote, let's do it. I don't have the money, we don't have the money now. So I think part of the issue is also, we've got to get ready to start asking for where the money's going to come from, demanding that we get it. So we've got to start being the mouthpiece for, our kids can't wait. And we can't solve the problems for them until we figure out where it's going to come from and we've got to start demanding that we get it. We get it from the state, we get it, and consider going back for another bond? There are folks who were previously on this board who would think that's sacrilegious and don't do it. I'd say ask, we must ask. And I want to, I'll ask anybody. Brother, you got a dime? I need it for kids. We need to never stop asking. Because if we stop asking, that means that we've fulfilled some folks' needs when they needed it and we're refusing to do it for the kids who are in our schools right now. So I do think we need to start that conversation again of figuring out how do we hurry and get the money and the resources back? And we use the examples of how we have reformed our efforts around our construction program to say, we know what we've learned from the past to be able to make sure we deliver so we don't have May View again having to be disappointed. There's nothing more disappointing to me than to have multiple school families say, but you promised us. I guarantee you, if I ever had a chance to be at the helm of being up with the board that got the money back to say, here's the resource, we would do everything we can to make sure we fulfilled those promises because we know what it was to look people in the eye and say we couldn't. Because the money got spent in various ways and I don't have it now. We have two school construction sites that are happening right now. We can do the continual practice to make sure we deliver for them so we're ready to deliver in the future for other schools. One is Wilson and the other is Lake that will eventually come on board. One is Wilson, and the other is Lake, that will eventually come on board. But I need resource. We've got to go to the state and say, help us rebuild the rest of our schools that are on the list, including Valley View. Fairmont. Crespi. Richmond High School. What it is, is imagine we've done plastic surgery, and we've redone our nose, and we've done our ears, but maybe our chin needs to be done now, because now it's there as our chin is really sticking out. It's an old dilapidated set of schools that looks uneven and not within the realm of what we're going for as far as the beauty of offering everything we can for our schools. So that's one thing to consider. The next thing is to really think about the impact of the issue around, the budgeting around the charter issue. We can do and push, and I'm happy to join whatever committee we create, but there are four sets of bills that we need to make sure happen. Because if that doesn't happen, a charter showed up ironically when we were voting on the moratorium last week and said, charter us, authorize us. I can't stop and say no until we get the authorization within the state to be the reason why we should, we couldn't say no before based on fiscal impact. It is in state law. The issue's going to be, and I hear Board Member Laura saying very clearly, I'm going to say no, whether the state authorizes me or not, I think is what she's saying. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and listen, and that's something I will consider doing as well. But if I could get the state to say, nah, enough with that madness, you don't have to break the law, then we need that. We need that pressure. So there's four bills, as Board Member Laura talked about, and those are AB 1505, 1506, 1507, and 1508. If you don't do anything else tonight, go home, just fill out a quick email and say, I need you to pass these bills and send it to those legislators, any legislator in Sacramento. The other thing is, we still have to make sure that we fight for fair and adequate funding, because even if we address the facilities questions as folks said, we have tremendous need. And we can be the case that you go up to Sacramento and say, we've passed parcel taxes, we've done our contribution, you need to do yours. So it's not even about just fighting the charter implications for finances, but somebody mentioned they came from Massachusetts, Jonathan. That's a perfect example. You know when they spend per pupil? 18,000 plus per pupil. Yes, they have less students, so maybe that makes it easier for them, but the bottom line is, their students aren't any different in terms of what their needs are in relation to how we educate kids. We spend maybe 11,000, 12,000 for a student here. So we really do have to think about this long-term, and I'm here to be committed with you, because at the end of the day, I don't know anybody, for the most part, who hasn't been part of this effort. We want to solve and address the needs. But I grew up poor. I know what it's like to have desires and wants and not have the resources to address it, address it, and it's frustrating. And I want you to know I'm ready to go take that story and tell that truth to Sacramento for our kids, and I'd be happy to join any of you to do it as well.
Mr. Pence, just before you go, because I think you'll be the last comment, I just wanted to make sure I responded to one public comment about what a parent termed a task force. So because we know the enrollment of Crespi has been declining and declined before Invictus, I asked Executive Director Ruben Arrelio, is here, maybe you can stand so people know who you are. Mr. Arrelio is one of our supervisors and supervises of the schools, the elementary schools in the May Valley, to begin to talk with families about what they're looking for, and like we heard a couple of public speakers, or certainly one, they're choosing out, what is it that we need to do? What will make the school more attractive? What is it that families want? What are they interested in? Because I think that is part of our continued responsibility to the community and to know what they're interested in in a school. So he and the elementary principals and middle will be engaging in that and talking to stakeholders and bringing us a report by the end of the school year about what they've learned. Thank you for that, Mr. Duffy. I'd like to also say there's one other question, I think it came from a public comment. I believe there are actually rules about how much we can charge a charter school, first base, is that correct?
Yes, there are rules on that with regard to the calculation of the per area square foot fee, and so it's based really on, among other things, I think mostly unrestricted general fund expenditures on maintenance and operations. And so there's, it's very clear on what you can do and what you can't do with regard to that fee.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So I want to join my board members in thanking everybody for coming out here. I'm trusting that this is the start of our communication process, not the end of our communication process. I heard lots of honest questions and skepticism and opinions, and that's what makes a good public discussion. And I'm hoping this continues, and I'd like to thank all my trustees for their comments, fellow trustees, and Trustee Quavis for always reminding us that there's so many things we wish we'd do, we had the money, but we don't at this moment. But we all need to redouble our efforts to try and change that. We shouldn't just sit here and say, there's no money. We all need to be saying we need to go with fair funding, we'll do this, and we need certain bills passed, so we can't expect somebody else to do it, we have to do it ourselves. Mr. Duffy, can we go back to slide 18? Because I mean, I love all these recommendations that you've put together, I think they look great. And I'm trying to understand, do you literally want direction from the board about this tonight, or are these just things you were hoping we could start thinking about and you'd bring this back to another meeting where we further discuss these items? Or at least say, we want you to think about these more seriously? Certainly, the last two, I think, are things that we, and the last bullet, of course, is work that we do every day. I think the most important to me tonight was making sure we came out with some clarity for families and community here in May Valley and across the district. And what I believe I've heard is support for that, support for avoiding closure, avoiding merger, so I believe I have enough direction to craft a next communication from staff on behalf of the board. Okay, thank you. Any closing comments for any board members? Okay, well, thank you everyone for coming out. I really appreciate you being here, and if you think we're not being here long, please tell us. Thank you.